I would now like to introduce Marlon Young.
Alright, just a quick summary of what's been going on in the high school thus far. We have a very motivational speaker coming, Bobby Petroselli, meeting on April 16th, and he's spreading a very positive and motivational speech to the school's body about how 10 seconds can change your life forever. And I just have a quick summary on him. Bobby Petroselli is one of the top motivational speakers in the country, spending most of his time on college and high school campuses throughout America. His story is one of personal triumph and hope following this devastating tragedy in his life. Most decisions are made in the timeframe of only 10 seconds, yet having an impact on your life forever. As a high school teacher and coach, his love for youth inspires you to take his dramatic story to audiences nationwide. Bobby has had the privilege of inspiring millions in personal television and radio appearances. And the way our school got involved with that is each teacher was given what were called recognition cards, and whenever they found a student that was participating in something that they deemed to be responsible or respectful, they were given a recognition card and they were able to redeem it for a t-shirt which was specially made for the event, or a book that was also specially made for the event. And that was Mr. Bobby, I think. Park testing is still going on. The school's done a really good job with making the time go between periods to make sure that everything's not single during the day. AP testing starts next week as well. There was an Arbor Day celebration last Friday where we planted a bobby club. They planted trees around about the board education building over there. May night is Unity Day. That's coming up soon. That's gonna be held in the gym. I believe it's $3 to get in. School clubs, I know Omega 13 is involved in that. It's pretty much just a day to get the community involved in something positive as well. It's gonna be a basketball game, DJ Dunk Tank, and a lot of local organizations will participate in that as well. Beautiful past last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Beauty of the Beast. It was a really good show. I was involved in that. And they had a pretty good turnout all three days. Big crowd. It was a long and hard process. We had a lot of practice. We started it back in November. And it came out pretty good, I think. And that's all that matters. Thank you.
This one Student Recognition Award goes to a high school student who has been on the honor roll for the past four years. He is a member of the National Honor Society and president of the Future Business Leaders of America. He has received the Excellence Award for Biology and the Golden Austin Award for the Future Business Leaders of America of New Jersey. This student is on the football and wrestling team and has received the NAACP Scholar at the award. He volunteers at the Ocean County Public Library and was given the Good Citizen Award for all of his work there. He volunteers his time tutoring fellow students at the high school. This student hopes to attend NJIT or Grand Vickers University in the fall. Please join me in congratulating Press-I-A-M. Congratulations to Marlon Young and Shaquell Ray Slade for receiving the 2014-2015 Students of the Year. Marlon and Shaquell will be recognized as the Ocean County Superintendent around the table on May 21st. Congratulations. Lakeview High School Mayor's Association Scholarship winner for 2014-2015 is Thomas Jervis. Thomas will be honored at the annual Ocean County Superintendent on May 21st. Congratulations, Thomas. Congratulations Emmanuel Sanchez for being recognized as the Ocean County School Board Association 2015 Unsung Hero. Emmanuel has been chosen as Lakeview High School's Unsung Hero for his dedication to the Pupil-Assisted Learning Program. Emmanuel provides help and support to teachers and counselors while tutoring underclassmen all while holding down a full-time job. Congratulations Emmanuel. I'm proud to announce that under the guidance of Sergeant Major Wilson, Lakeview High School Junior ROTC Greater Team competed in Lakers on Saturday, April 18th, and placed third overall in mixed teams, third in the cross-country rescue, third in the golfing run, and first in the team run. If Sergeant Major Wilson is here, please join me while we honor those students who took part in the event.
You've got more than you thought. He's right in the center.
They're trying to open the door, but it keeps making a sound. Still no AC here.
Okay, we now... Let me present the 2015-2016 budget. Members of the Board of Education, on behalf of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Luthers and myself, I'd like to present the budget for the 2015-2016 school year. I want you to know that the budget was advertised. Thank you. The budget was advertised last Saturday in the Asbury Park Press. It was also advertised on our website. I want you to know that the budget input from the state monitors greatly appreciated. A very difficult budget to present this year, again. We know that we're in difficult times with funding throughout the whole state. We do have some changes to the advertised budget, which I will review in a minute, but I would like to go through the process of how we arrived at our first budget. As you know, there's a 2% cap that's imposed on all of the public agencies in the state of New Jersey. And how we arrived at that is the 2014-15 tax base was $84,693,837. The school funding before MAC allows us to make adjustments to that base number. One of the adjustments is for enrollment increase. We're allowed to increase that base by $3,497,500. That gives us an adjusted base that's going to be hit with a 2% increase of $88,191,337. 2% increase, that number is $1,763,826. For our new tax base would be $89,955,163. Please, I appreciate it. Thank you. We're also allowed to have an adjustment for healthcare cost increase of $395,005. That gives us the total maximum amount, the total maximum amount that's allowed to be raised by taxation, is $90,350,168. I don't know if you recall, but in prior years, the district had gone to cap. And this is what the cap is, the 2%. We had gone to a number that was less than the cap, which gave us what they call a budget cap increase, permissible amount to raise your budget cap. We don't have that anymore because we utilized it last year and the year before. So therefore, this is the maximum amount to raise by taxation. We have to live with this number. Our revenues... You see the current taxes are $84,693,837. The proposed tax is $90,350,168. Difference is $5,656,331. That's the tax. Now, there are other revenues that will increase our budget. Rents, whatever we receive in rental of the buildings, $50,000. Our miscellaneous revenues, which include any type of interest income that we receive from our investors. That did go down because we did move some money around to a different part of the budget. That's why there's a decrease in there. So the total amount of local money, this is local money, is $91,024,977. And here's our state aids. This is the state, the calculated aids that we're supposed to receive from the state of New Jersey. Now, if you've been following the budget for the last couple of years, you'll see that the state aids have been staying pretty much constant. You see 2014-15, they're the same. The only one that has changed there, as you can see, is the extraordinary aid. The other one on the bottom, I'll get to in a minute. But all of our categorical equalization aid, transportation, special education aid, has been frozen. Not only for Lakewood, but for every school district in the state of New Jersey. There are minor increases in some districts, but the actual form that we're supposed to receive in state aid is not reflected in our state aid figures. Something we have to look at. The $500,000 increases for extraordinary aid, extraordinary aid is the amount of money that you see. If we have a special education child that has expenses that are greater than $55,000, the amount that's over $55,000 is subject to a percentage of state aid from the state. Right now, I believe it's 65%. That could change. So 65% of the child is at $100,000. $45,000 would be hit at 65% if we're allowed to receive that from the state. And that's what that $4.5 billion is reflecting. The other non-public transportation aid, we had budgeted $270,050. Speaking with the monitors, I believe that we can't raise that by $200,000. So we're going to go up to $470,050. Yeah, $50. That's not going to affect taxes, like I said. That is a projection of state aid that we're going to receive. So the total money from the state sources is $29,105,446. Then it gave the reimbursement by $100,000. The total revenues, the total revenues to support our current expense budget. Our current expense budget is the money that we use to operate the school on a daily basis. That's our current expense budget, okay? It's $120,630,423. It's an increase of $5,751,469 per year. Now, we have restricted funds that we receive from the state and federal government. Those restricted funds are pre-school education aid. It went down this year because the population, the student population went down. And that's based on a percent, an amount for each student of around $13,000. That money has to be used for preschool. And what you have to understand is whatever you see in restricted state federal aid cannot be moved into the first page. We can't co-mingle funds. Just as we did with the referendum. That money has to go for the referendum. You cannot use Title I carryover, the preschool education aid. You cannot use that in your current expense budget. You must use it for the programs that the state says. As you know, a couple of years ago, we just got a, as a matter of fact, we had a penalty from three years ago. We're not doing the right thing. We're doing the right thing. Thanks for our bonds to the superintendent. And Luther. The preschool carryover is just money from this year, so it adds up into $1,881,985. The other restricted entitlements include Chapter 192, 193, which are all non-public services. It also includes non-public cursing, non-public textbooks, non-public technology. That's all money that has to go to non-public schools that's designated from the state to the non-public schools. It has to be used for that use. The restricted state aid revenues come out to $20,716,456, which is a reduction. It's $3,235,279. The next section is restricted federal aid. It's Title I, Title II, IDEA. I'll strip over that for a minute. The other, other is the Perkins Grant. As you see, each one of those accounts have gone down. We are mandated by the state to budget less than 100% of the current year allocation because we don't know what the allocation is for next year. But as I said before, we cannot use that money for anything else. That money comes in and goes right back out to those programs. So if we only receive $14 million for Title I, we can only spend $14 million for Title I. Okay, so we may receive more, but that's budgeted at about 85% of the current year's allocation. So that's how we did our budgeting. We'll receive our numbers probably in about a week or two, something like that. We'll be getting to them soon. The preschool expansion grant is a new fund that we received this year. That's based on 90 students that we have to include in the preschool program, not preschool disabled, regular preschool program. That money has to be for new students only. So we can't take it co-mangled with the preschool education aid. We have to use that solely for the new students because the federal government wants us to expand our preschool program, as you've been reading. They've been very active on that, trying to get preschool children involved. So that money has to be used for that town holding, the 350s for Perkins. Our total federal grants come out to $23,120,948. So between the state and the federal, the total grants in total are $43,837,404. Our total operating and special revenue budget, $164,467,827, which is only a slight increase of $848,000. Next section is the debt service funds. Debt service funds are the, reflect the referendum that you passed back in September. That money has already been designated for the debt service or for all the projects in the debt service. That again, cannot be co-mangled with anything else above. So that money has to be spent there. This year, we voted out state aid because the only $18,000 that you see here in the state aid figure is from a prior uncompleted project. The project that we voted on, the $34 million project, will receive state aid next year. The 16-17 school year budget. And the total amount for debt service is $1,306,446. So our total budget for 2015 school year, 2015-16 school year is $165,774,273, which is only an increase of $1.927,548. Now, again, like I said, if we receive more federal aid, that will go into the bottom line of that budget, but it will be used for federal projects. That's our total budget for this year. Appropriations are what down here, like I said, we did increase, and I'm not going to go through the whole page because it takes a lot of time for you. We did increase the revenues by $200,000. We made a lot of adjustments in these accounts to reflect the extra $200,000. So the bottom line is $120,830,423, which is not reflected here. What you're seeing here is what was advertised. That's why I'm showing you this. We advertise this budget and we're addressing it. This is where, these are the areas that we've been, we've allocated money. Tax calculation, so I'm sure you want to know. Current year taxes, $84,693,837. The tax rate is approximately $1.28 and a half cents for 100. We're projecting this to go up about nine cents, eight and a half, nine, I'm sorry, nine and a half cents. It is now the $90,351,68 is a dollar thirty-eight. How does that affect you? If say tomorrow you take a house that's worth $300,000. The current year taxes are about $3,000... The operating budget, like I explained, current expense budget, will increase it to $4,140. That's an increase of $284.10. The debt service, which we have no control over whatsoever, like I said, will be increased by another $52.20. So the total increase on your taxes for a house of value raised at $300,000 would be $336.30. So your taxes go from $3,855,90 to $4,192.20. Which is, considering the situation is not that great. Now, we did have, on this advertised budget, we did advertise for a separate question, which I ended up referring to the monitors, but it was a feed to it. Separate question, it's out. I want to first say that... I want to first say that the separate question as of today is $2.5 billion to provide courtesy busing for children in grades six through 12. If everybody tiers, if all relevant public schools tier, and we have gotten an indication that that's a possibility, a strong possibility, we can fit courtesy busing in the budget for grades preschool through fifth grade. Now, there's also some discussion that if the referendum cannot, if we cannot find a way to go up with the money to eliminate the referendum, that the tiering deal could be off the table. So at this point, that is the, that's where we are as of today. We do not have to adopt the budget until May 13th. So there will be continuing negotiations and discussions. If you remember, last year, we actually didn't come to an agreement until July. But that's, this is where we are as of today. We could not fit $2.5 billion under the cap. And I have no commitment for additional aid from the state. So that is the current status of transportation, through transportation.
Do you want to have any questions on the budget?
Well, through the chair.
No, I was going to say, if someone will take questions or recommendations.
Alright, through the chair. Ms. Arzour, you mentioned that last year, we didn't come to an agreement until July. I know that that had a real effect into the creation of routes because it ended on the creation of the courtesy busing, the creation of routes, whether we had courtesy buses or not. I'm not sure if this is a rumor or if it was factual, that one of our bus contractors actually was trying to pull out a license and couldn't be on service. Is there a hard deadline this year in which all sides can come to determine, to agree?
Well, I'm hoping, my deadline should be May 13th. Now, last year, beyond that deadline, you have to re-adopt a new budget. Because whatever happened took place outside of my authority.
Alright, so that's something fair to take into consideration. Did that ultimately affect all the routes in Lincoln?
Yes, I really understand that and hope not to repeat that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, so I have an answer. So the public, the public, only on the budget. Does anyone in the public have a question on the budget? Okay, it was just... We'll have other participations and other items later on, but right now, just just for the budget. You didn't have to sign up for this. Any comment you want to make on the budget, you can.
So what I understand is that the current deal we have...
So what I understand is that the current deal we have is not guaranteed, right?
I'm sorry, state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Glenn Wilson, Lake, Lakewood graduate, not, uh, class nineteen seventy-six. The current, the current deal we have now with the courtesy busing, uh, provides about three million dollars, right?
Two and a half.
Okay, two and a half. So we don't know where the other place coming from.
As, as of today, we do not know where two and a half is coming from. We will be looking at different alternatives, how to reconfigure routes. There's two things I'm looking at, in terms of refunds that we have to state. We're going to do everything we can to try to make it happen, but as of right now, that's where we are, and there is no guarantee.
Okay, so, so if the one does not happen, we could be right, make a square one.
That's going to be up to the non-public schools.
Anyone else who can help, please, make a vote.
So about the preschool housing, like, uh, are we satisfied that we have gotten all the concessions there are to get, uh, of running the transportation system? It becomes important because it is good to transport every child. But if it is budget-wise, unfeasible to do that, we have to work with what we can. If there is an easier way to get this done through additional concessions, perhaps a bus route that picks up male students and takes them to their various issues, and then female students in the same thing, if there is a, it is not a, a savings in doing that, we have to look at every way possible to do this. And/or, if there is, if there is such a thing, is, uh, parents paying a small amount towards the, uh, transportation. No, no parent, uh, that, that works as multiple children wants to have to have the problem of taking their children to school or making, uh, other arrangements. It is good and just to have a transportation system. However, we just have to now sit down and figure out how we're going to find it. And there's multiple ways of doing that, and now is a busy time. And let's try to drag out any more concessions and possibly this time from, uh, parents that would prefer to pay a little bit to have their children transported. Thank you.
I just, I just want to say through the chair, Mr. Haudday. Um, it's called this, Mr. Haudday, yeah? It's called subscription, uh, busing and the practice in many districts. We looked at it last year, like we do every year, and we'll actually raise our costs because there are many children, once they have a subscription to busing, they'll get it for free. So you, you lower, um, your cost in one area and then you raise your, um, the cost, the expenses much more than you also in a different area.
But it was open, my point is open. What, what Mr. Flavio is referring to is you have to provide, um, if you provide subscription busing, you have to make an exception for students who are on the free and reduce lunch, provide that subscription grant, uh, subscription busing gratis. So that's the causes we're referring.
Go through it. Go through it.
Thank you.
Norrill, one hundred and two, public school, I think. My question is, on the expansion of the preschool program grant, we're only allowed to take ninety students. My question is, there will be private, non-public school children that will be venturing into this also. Are we going to, where are we going to locate these children? Are we going to have to rent a place? Will the children be separated from non-public to public school students? There is a carryover of a hundred and three thousand, six, six people that we apply if we need to put it towards more students. The other thing is, um, presently, I think they're in the area of the Card Street School in those trailers. If they're not in those trailers anymore, what are we doing with that land and that home? I'm just, I'm just have a, I'm, I'm also concerned, is there going to be more money coming out of the taxpayer pocket? If the expansion grants for ninety students, how do we go about doing this? I'm sure there's going to be more than ninety students. Thank you.
Will Laura, Laura or Tom take this question, please?
There are certain criteria that have to be met to, to, under the preschool expansion grant. All funds are, all preschool students, general ed students are covered by the preschool expansion grant, doesn't come out of the general fund. And you have to fall, for the preschool expansion grant, you have to fall from the two hundred percent poverty level. And all students who apply for, who go for the grant are public school students. And, and everyone would be, there's no separating students. And there would be different campuses, there would be a campus, one, two, and three, there would be students at preschool schools. Well, there's, there are the campus, one, two, and three, have a campus behind Lyndon Avenue and one behind the middle school. And we are looking into releasing, um, another campus.
Is there anyone else? Doctor Rush?
And we're looking, um, and we're looking into releasing the Holy Family School. That's on the, uh, district.
One of the things that she had asked about was the hundred and three thousand dollars. That's not for preschool expansion, that's for preschool, uh, education act. That cannot be used for preschool expansion.
Valerie Spade, one ninety-six, on page. Valerie Spade, one ninety-six, on page. My question is, um, the federal preschool expansion grant, one moment.
Silence, please.
Um, the federal preschool, um, expansion grant, um, is only guaranteed for one year. So if there is movement, oh yes, it's only guaranteed for one year. So if there's movement, where do you intend to get the funds for the following years?
It's actually a four-year grant. And actually, the four-year grant is going to add, and Tom would like to go further.
It's a four-year grant, but it's based on budget concerns every year. It is not guaranteed for four years. I suggest you look into it.
It's a four-year plan.
It's a four-year plan.
If we cannot fund it, we do not provide it, the, the lease for four years, the children that are in the program will then become eligible for preschool education act funding at thirteen thousand dollars per student. So that one point nine million dollars we got from PDA money, that will be increased by the number of students that we have in the program. So we receive funding that way.
Tom, Tom, I think it's important to mention that the lease for the other campus is on a year-by-year basis.
Yes, I would be, the lease, we can't go for anything more than a year, a year. We totally go for that.
So if, if going to budgetary concerns the state says we no longer provide the, the grant, then we terminate the lease.
Doctor Rush, if you'd wait patiently.
Thank you. Mike Rush, fifteen oh two, Malibu Drive. Couple of things on, on the budget, Tom. You, you, when you were going through the budget a few minutes ago, I didn't see, or what I saw with after-school program, that's all zeros. I may be wrong, would you address that, please? Let's give me the, uh, blackboard. The after-school programs? I didn't, I didn't see any, there were zeros beside after-school program for next year and the year after. Would you address that, what's happening with after-school programs?
It's in front, well, most of the after-school programs are run through, uh, Title I, and we're, we are continuing all the after-school programs on the high school, middle school, they're, they're, um... They're not in the general fund budget.
It's not in the general fund, it's Title I, so it's...
We didn't take away any of the after-school.
Okay, special projects. Uh, just want to address the courtesy busing. Understanding that we are in dire straits in terms of monies, we, we know that. But my questions are, number one, what's your contingency plans? Because right now, it sounds like we're gambling. We don't, we, it's fifty-fifty whether we're going to get additional money for courtesy busing. Now, I understand courtesy busing, we fought courtesy busing in nineteen eighty-six. One of the main reasons we fought courtesy busing because of the sidewalks and the traffic flow. To have these youngsters, especially grades six, seven, eight, to walk the streets without sidewalks, to walk where traffic patterns are terrible in Lakewood. My question, what are the contingency plans in case? And judging from what I know about the State Department, we, I mean, I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think we're going to get the additional monies. So I'm asking the board to think about what we do with the township. We're providing sidewalks in those streets where there are no sidewalks, and when our youngsters have to go off to school, they will not walk in the streets. Again, what are the plans? If there are no plans, then we need to say so. And I spoke a while ago about getting community involved to sit down with board members, the administration, so we can together come up with a plan, so our students are not just left on the street just to walk to school because, because, I don't have to say it again, the traffic flow and the other issues in Lakewood regarding sidewalks. Thank you.
Only on the budget. Anyone else?
Doctor Rush, I agree with you on the sidewalks, but I think that you can address that to the township committee because we agree one hundred percent that it would be unsafe to have your children.
And I don't, we don't want to go back and forth, but again, it is a township issue, but it has to be addressed by the board of education.
We can't control, we don't build the sidewalks in the town. No, I agree with you.
What I'm saying is your contingency plan, if there's a group of people who plan to meet with the administration of the township and say, listen, we may not get this busing, and if you don't know soon, you say the deadline is May thirteenth. Then we have four months to either build sidewalks and deal with the traffic flows in Lakewood. And instead of waiting, my question is, if we don't have a plan, we need to put a plan together.
I agree. I think if citizens would go and explain that to the township committee, I think that they would hopefully...
I don't, I don't want to argue back and forth, but it can't be one side. We have to go together.
Doctor Rush.
Part of you, part of us, part of the administration, within the...
Doctor Rush, we met with the township. We had a meeting in the district with the township officials. And they told us that they put millions of dollars last year into sidewalks. They are taking the bomb, I think with the tune of six million dollars, before starting to, uh, the, the town. So they are saying that, they are saying that they are doing as much as possible, as quickly as possible, to kind of catch up because there are many sidewalks missing in this town. So they are saying they're doing our best.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? All right, I'm closing the public portion of the budget. Tom, thank you. Mr. Danbola, are you going to the action items then?
Is it on the agenda, as I just see, on page twenty-eight?
One moment, please. I know that it's very difficult to keep a youngster quiet and, um, I don't know, maybe next time we'll provide babysitting or something. But can you please do your best because this is important to everyone that showed up here? And they have, I, I, I know it's hard to keep a baby quiet. It's hard to hear, um, but, you know, rock the baby, walk the baby, so we can all hear each other, please? Thank you.
On the page twenty-eight, item number six, it's a duplication. Just want to remove that, the, 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 it is a duplication. I need a motion to accept the minutes from March eleventh, twenty fifteen. Motion. All in favor? Close. Mr. Gonzalez will be, will say.
Oh, forgive me. He asked if he had missed it, but we wrote on the actual budget yet, or because you went just now to the minutes.
We're not taking the vote here.
We're not taking the vote yet.
No.
It is on the agenda. Okay, it says be at the top, that's why I was going to go there. So we're not actually voting tonight, we're going to do the actual vote on the budget on page thirteen.
Yes, who, who I delay?
Me and B, as well as, and B.
I need a motion to accept the, uh, March twenty-fourth minutes. Flackton, you have a second. My, this one, off the table, and pause. The bottom of the tip, I can see. I need a motion to accept the additions to the agenda that are on page one to seven, item seven, I'm sorry, item eight. Back to the agenda, a motion. The additions to the agenda. It's one, it's one second. Second, second, I miss, Gonzalez.
Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Flackton. The, 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 the...
Yeah, yeah, it's not the actual, um, items themselves.
Whatever, the agenda.
Yeah.
Steph? Yes. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Mudd? Mr. Freeman? Mr. Gonzalez? I have a motion to accept the agenda items, business agenda items on page four, item nine A to Q, on page nine. I need a motion. Motion?
Second.
Which page, Tom, you're good at? That's on page nine, item ten A through page, I'm sorry, nine A through page nine. Page four to page nine. Mr. Freeman, moved it, second.
Discussion?
Second and the second.
Over to you, second.
Five.
Uh, Mr. Freeman again.
We moved, uh, this one, ours.
And discussion?
Yes, can you, uh, can you talk about the changes to, on page nine, A one? What are the changes for the A? Now, let's start the part of this motion. It's the page nine A. I said, page nine, I have a queue. Oh, I have, page nine, I have a queue. Okay. The next motion will be to, yes, the agenda, is it on that page? All right, I think it's starting on that page. I have you on page four, correct? Sorry. Page four through page nine. Item ten, I'm sorry, nine A through Q.
That 9 is hominial item 9, on page 4.
Just so we're clear, we're in discussion now, Mr. Dambala?
We're in discussion, yes.
Discussion on those items.
Mr. Slaken?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteberger?
Yes.
Mr. Tiff? Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Munn? Mr. Deckelitz? Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? I need a motion on page 9, item 10, hominial 10A through page 39, uh, letter, small J. Mr. Motion, it's on table.
Motion.
Mr. Gonzalez, second.
Second.
Tiff? Discussion?
Yes, can you, uh, can you talk about the changes in 9, A1? Has it been changed from the previous?
Final.
Correct.
Yep. Fully first meeting. I think this, yeah, it's the first meeting, so it's, uh.
But what is being revised?
Typically, Strauss S.A., which is our policy company, will provide updates to these policies because the code is constantly changing in these areas. So we give us updates from time to time, we're presumably just voting on minor edits based on code change.
That's why it's first meeting. We do it in, as comments.
Is that what we're voting on minor changes to the code changes?
Yes, this is, like, Mr. Zinn, we just explained, we receive updates on a regular basis from Strauss S.A.